Oh God, this is mean I have to.
This means we have to work now.
Call to order the regular meeting of Board of Selectmen on Wellington, June third, twenty twenty four at. Six oh one P M. Uh, Jim, and what you believe. We just do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now we get to the minutes. We had the twentieth and the twenty eighth. Right here motion to accept the minutes of May twentieth.
Motion to accept the meetings. I second that.
Well, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye? I'd like to hear a motion to accept the minutes of. May twenty eighth, the special meeting that was held at one P M. Make a motion to accept those. That wasn't there. Oh, I would second it then. Um. Any discussion on that? Any, no? All in favor, aye? I abstain. Extentions, candy. Okay. Present to speak. Public participation is encouraged. Speakers are limited by appropriateness. Staying on topic and maintaining decorum. Time may be limited to maintain progress. Please request. The reserved time during the meeting if you wish to speak to a specific agenda item. Is there anybody here present to speak? Uh, Melissa. Melissa?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Okay, Melissa McKinnon, sixty-three Lucian Road. I just wanted to say thank you to all who came out to this year's Wellington Day event. On May twenty-fifth. Uh, we had over forty vendor booths. Um, went through over three hundred and fifty things of cotton candy. Sold out of lemonade, hot dogs, hamburgers. Had twenty-one kids and adults at the fishing derby. I would say it was overall an incredible turnout. And probably the biggest year yet based on both parking lots being completely full and people parking on Route thirty-two. So, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for that.
Thank you for sharing that, it was an excellent event, I was there all day.
Thank you.
Lot of sun though.
There was a lot of sun, it was warm.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie? Stephanie? Can we come back to Stephanie, we can't hear you. Maybe on our end, I'm not sure.
She's just not unmuted.
Okay.
Okay. I think it's that I just say, yes, I know it's being recorded, I'm sorry. Steph Summers for Y Road. Um, I've probably spent more than a hundred hours on the budgeting process this year from both on Board of Finance and as a member of C I P. But I'm speaking for only myself tonight. I just want to urge that we expeditiously present the L, the major drivers of the budget increase to the. Residents by the every door direct mailing that you all are in preparation of doing. Uh, both by the first selectman, the Board of Finance Chair, the Board of Ed Chair and the C I P Chair. Because I think people are in somewhat of a huge vacuum. Um, on what the elements are, and I would say in particular, we need to highlight. That, and this is a number from the superintendent. That because our special ed out placements have grow, have tripled this year. From two to either six or seven that we know for sure. Um, that is an, uh, an unbudgeted expense year-over-year increase of more than six hundred and twenty-five grand. So over half a million just in that growth in the school budget. And it's, it's virtually impossible for them to absorb a figure that large. It's an un, it's a partially funded state mandate, as you know. But it's nowhere near fully funded and it's hitting a lot of small towns, ourselves included, at this pace. So I would say that is one of the major drivers. This, the Board of Ed has already cut one teaching position by attrition. Um, for in the second round of cuts to go into this second referendum. And I think anything further the superintendent has said as far as large six-figure cuts. Would definitely tap into existing teaching staff. So, uh, I, I just can't say enough about how important it is for people to show up. Much more than sixteen point five percent of the overall electorate in this town. And, uh, the other, the other element of this is that see, that the schools. And the, and the lined up repairs in, in earmarked money in the capital reserve. Were also cut a hundred, an additional hundred twenty-five thousand. Uh, that will affect those H VAC and roof repairs. That you guys took, the Board of Selectmen took out of that capital reserve, which is your, your, uh. You're, you're free to do that, of course. Um, but it's, it does have that impact also on the schools in this first year of. Trying to start the, the difficult task of repairing our schools. So I just wanna. Make sure that voters are aware of those two things and that they understand. That, uh, all this budget cutting has gotten us down to year-over-year overall expense. For all the budgets, including Region nineteen, that's already passed. Of, of a five percent figure, which is pretty modest, given what we're up against. With especially the special ed outplacement hit. So, um, just to advertise, the town meeting is a week from tonight. And, uh, the proposed referendum date is June eighteenth, which is, uh. Coming shortly, so those in those every door direct mailings of, of what the deal is with this budget. Uh, really need to be finished this week, I think, if they're going to be in advance of the town meeting, which I would encourage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steph. Jim?
Hi guys, James Marshall, forty-six Fisher Hill Road. Um, I wanna start out with, um. I guess the positive stuff, uh, then learning about, uh, the two million dollars that. It appears you guys have, uh, your, I guess the Selectman's Office as well as Troy over at Public Works. Um, has managed to secure with Newtia, um, towards the some of the road improvements that are sitting on capital improvement plan. Um, that is great news, um, so I appreciate your efforts in seeking that state funding. Um, however, it comes with the caveat that, um, as those projects were represented, um. C I P only has them covered at, I believe, two point seven million dollars in our current plan. Um, as submitted to Ms. Nuccio's office, uh, I believe it was a request of four point five million. Um. So it underscores the importance of. Providing funding to the capital improvement needs in this town. Cause as presented, or maybe there's further detail coming out, but as presented, we're still in the same hole that two million dollars puts us at. A, a net savings of two hundred thousand dollars in a C I P plan overall, which. Is caused by the fact that we continue to short fund these projects, we continue to short fund this plan. And prices increase and we don't have the capacity to, to get on top of it. Um, but regardless, thank you for your work in trying to advance, um, some state funding to help support these, um, these projects. Uh, additionally, I'll, I'll kind of second much of what Steph said, um. I'm, I'm rather disappointed in the lack of outreach, um. Or willingness by this board as well as the chair and some members of the Board of Finance to engage in. Expressing the importance of passing a budget in this town. Um, budgets that you voted to approve, um, budgets not everybody agrees with. Um, I personally think the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar savings, uh, or reduction in spending. Causing a, a reduction spending year over year from last year was kind of an asinine decision, gentlemen, honestly. Um, given the level of need that we have and given the fact that there is four hundred thousand dollars earmarked in some way, shape or form to the. Emergency Services Building Committee or those projects of which we have an unknown need, um. So it, it was again, it was a decision to sell the town short, um, in the long run, uh, which was disappointing. But with that said. I, I speak for myself personally, but I'm expecting to see leadership out of this committee, I'm expecting this board. To promote the fact that passing this budget is important. Speaking honestly and straightforwardly and not disingenuously about. The very budgets that you put forth, um, and I know this letter has been on the table, I hear there's, uh, some back and forth and, and difficulty. In getting four chairs to agree on presenting facts to the town. In their best interest to let them know what this is about. Um, I, I find it disappointing, I find it very, um. Very frustrating, um, I think it's something that was easily accomplished by this board and by the chairs of the other boards at play. Um, you know, if you make decisions on the budget and you can't stand to find the facts that. In a simple maller, um, it's, it's really disappointing and, um, I'm hoping you guys step up. And, uh, provide some of the leadership this town deserves, so thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anybody else in present to speak? Seeing none? Uh. Get on the correspondence. You should have the correspondence in your. Um. File.
No, it was just the.
The, um, Connecticut Museum of Natural History has asked, um. If they could tour one of our cemeteries, I believe it's the old East Cemetery. I guess this town has a history of vampires or something that I was unaware of prior to the Connecticut Museum of Natural History. Telling me that. And they would like to walk through our cemetery where the vampires are buried sometime in October. I am guessing on Halloween, uh, we are in. I have. I'm trying to get a hold of, uh, people that are in charge of the cemetery to. Make sure it's okay with them prior to okaying that. Um, Public Works report. Public Works has been, uh, reasonably busy this, uh, last couple of weeks. They're out mowing road sides and sightlines, uh. They, the. Dog pound, which is currently not being used because. We don't meet some of the. Department of Agriculture standards in dog pounds. Because they changed the standards on us and so we are looking to upgrade our dog pound. As we can, uh, they were having a. Problem, I believe, with rodents and their, so the, uh. E P W cleaned out the dog pound and are trying to get that under control. Uh, the senior center. Bus was involved in the, um, Memorial Day. Um. Remembrances, so they washed the bus for them. Uh. They filled potholes in town, they cleaned out some waterways, is looking to clean out some more as, as. Time permits. They've done vehicle and equipment repairs, they washed and cleaned the garage. They, uh, the new doors for the town garage were replaced with L R P funds. And, uh, when they replaced the doors, thirty-year-old, uh. Uh, contact switches for the alarm system went out, so those are being worked on as we speak. Uh. Representative Nuccio, uh, approached me on Memorial Day and. Uh, asked me if we had a road or she knew of a road, our road problems and, uh. Was so. I told her to go ahead and request from the governor what monies we could get. She worked with, uh, Troy a lot and our, uh. Town. Engineer Carl. Uh, to get the information that was needed and convince them that we had been looking at this. Seriously for, I believe it's now over thirty years. To see what we could do with, uh, Village Hill and Schofield Roads. Uh, for drainage. Uh, I know that, uh, Jim brought up some questions. These are questions, because this is so new, I'm not sure that we have all the information that Jim's looking for yet. And I'm looking for now, uh. Troy and I are meeting on it tomorrow. And this is a very large project, it may be that we cannot complete the project. But there are parts of the project that are, uh, expensive. And if we can get them in place and the rest of the project can go. From as, as I understand it, the project. Is gathering the water so that it stays off the road, getting the water down to thirty-two and then getting it across thirty-two. Without the silk and, uh. Other contaminants, so. If we start from the bottom and work our way up, this maybe not be a project we're, we're able to complete, but it's a project we'll be able to get a good start on. So that when we can complete it, we can complete it. We've, we've got to check the, uh, state mandated. Uh. Parts of that as well. Oh. Before I continue, I'd like to add two, uh. Items to the, uh. Agenda, which I should have done before I started that last one. Uh. I'd like to add, uh, item D under A, Selectman Report, the employee handbook that needs an update. And E, the plow bids. Let me put that under, uh. Yeah, let's leave it there. I, it may be better under new business, but we'll leave it there for now. Since Public Works.
So under, so you got employee handbook, a motion?
Plow bid.
Plow bid, yep. We need to make motions.
Yes, we need most.
Need to make a motion that we add, uh, section eight D employee handbook to our agenda for tonight.
Second.
Okay.
Uh, and discussion, all in favor, aye? Do I hear a motion at item E, plow bids?
Yes. I'll make a motion to add, uh, item E, plow bids to the, to my suggestion.
One second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Aye?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, probably extra words that needed to be in there, but. Uh. State Police report, we have not heard from the State Police. Uh, I have been. Writing them weekly. Uh. And talked to the Master Sergeant personally. In an attempt to get assigned a liaison sergeant and I have yet to hear back from them, they're. Uh, currently. Busy, they, they lost a trooper last week and they would. Maybe a homicide, they, he was working on the road, a guy. Hit him and took off, killed him. So, we, uh. We send our respects to the State Police and our prayers. First Selectman Status Report. Town meeting was called at the last, uh. At the special meeting on the twenty-eighth. Minutes we pass, so there will be a town meeting at seven o'clock at the, uh, Town Hall. Well, no, this is the Town Office building, that's actually. It's the old Town Hall to almost everybody in town except the, the purists who believe it's the Town Hall. Seeing a purist sitting in the back row back there. Not for nothing.
Pretty pure.
Uh, the town meeting concerns the, the, uh, second budget referendum and I encourage everyone to, uh. Show up to that, particularly those that. Have not yet, uh, educated themselves as to the, the, uh. New budget numbers.
Will we be, um, in your presentation, Pat, E D P?
Uh, we will be presenting the, the, uh, new numbers and we will, uh. Probably reflect them against the old numbers and, uh. We will allow people to speak. Through the topic.
Do we get, uh, are there any handouts or some overhead or some?
Uh, there will be handouts similar to this that they're current, that are currently available. Uh, at the town clerk's office, they're on the front desk there, you don't even need to ask, you can just take.
Thanks, Steve.
No problem. Uh. There was a Steve Grant that was, uh. Offered by the state to. Do. Uh, renovations and upgrades to the old Town Hall or Town Hall. Uh, or septic and, uh. Other upgrades like windows. Uh. That, that Steve Grant needed an extension. We were granted the extension. Last Tuesday. And, uh. Then at the. Tuesday. Special. Meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We had to have an emergency declaration making me able to sign that. Because that hadn't been turned over yet. I got it assigned, signed Wednesday and they approved the extension Thursday. So that project is now in the hands of Troy and Carl. To get that thing installed as soon as possible. The minis.
This is for the, uh, the, uh, Town. Old Town Hall, Town Hall.
Sesspool, right? Yes, the Sesspool will be removed, we're gonna be putting in a, an actual septic tank. And then there will be a leach field that will leach underneath the town, I mean.
So the chain of events there was, so we, we had, uh, applied for it and it sat there and then it happened and yes. We, um, uh, we had made, we had to make an application for the.
An extension, yes. And we got the extension and we will now be doing the work. There, hopefully if there's enough money left over, there's a window that's broken. That's been broken for. I, I thought it was recent, it turns out that it's been broken for about two years and we're hoping to get that fixed. It needs to be fixed in. Uh, to, to, to meet historic standards, so it may be it's. A little more expensive to fix than just fixing a window in your house. Uh. It's a problem, I'm building that old and that historic. The minisplits have been installed in the common rooms upstairs, uh, it's now. Very nice environment up there. I spent ten minutes there enjoying the air conditioning myself today, so, uh. Human Services is also very happy that they're in there. We need to finish the, uh, interior installations of the storage closet in for the registrars. Uh, as I understand it with our registrars. Speaking, now that I'm on that topic, I'm heading off on a tangent, uh. They will be seeking additional funding because of the second referendum. And the Republican primary for U S Senate. Which are two elections that they weren't expecting, given the, uh. New requirements for early voting, uh, that were unfunded by the state, we, we will be funding those too.
Three, how many days is that, Pete?
It's like four days, five.
Five days, five days to three people, right?
Yes. Cause you need, uh, a registrar, a moderator and, and a, a count checker.
So that's a week of three people for, for each of those.
Yes. Are they, except for the, except for the, uh, presidential election, I think that's two weeks.
Oh wow, okay. And that's any of that concurrent, so we.
No, no, no. So, that would, that would be, uh.
Yeah, far. Right, okay, thanks, Pete.
Um. So that brings us to the employee handbook. The Wellington Personnel, uh, Policy. Uh, I'm just gonna make the motion, I move that we add Appendix E Voluntary Supplemental Insurance and Eligibility. All Town of Wellington employees who work ten or more hours per week. And compensated elected officials as defined in the Personnel Policy. Will be eligible for the following one hundred percent employee paid post-tax benefits. So it doesn't affect their taxes or the, the town's budget at all. Uh, I meant voluntary vision insurance. Voluntary term life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance, voluntary accident. Insurance, voluntary critical illness insurance and voluntary vision. Insurance, uh, due to a, due to minimum participation requirements, rates will often change. At any time, the Town of Wellington reserves the right to adjust carriers, change plan rates or choose not to continue administrating. Of any of these voluntary benefits, so this is a benefit for the part-time lowers the, the bar, I believe it's from, uh. Fifteen hours to ten hours for. Employees to voluntarily. Get insurance at their own expense.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you're a second.
Yes, I second that.
Any other discussion, now that it already discussed?
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh. Snowplow bids. At two o'clock on the twenty-eighth. That was Tuesday, correct? I look over, my trusty assistant, make sure I have the dates correct, uh, the, the, uh. Public Works Department, myself and, did you witness it? And Shannon witnessed it, uh, opened the sealed bids for snowplow. I mean, for. Uh, the town for next winter. We only had one bid, so. I am moving that we accept the snowplow bid. For a hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour. For one year for the twenty, uh, four. Twenty-five. Season. For Larry. I, I, I apologize, Kutchko?
Larry, get hurt.
Kutchko.
Kutchko, man.
Kutchko.
That's normally how it's done, it's an hourly.
Yes, it's normally hourly and this was. Uh, within the, the rate that we had budgeted.
Alright.
So, uh, the, uh.
That's in addition to what, uh, Public Works does.
This is an addition, this is, this is, I believe they have five rounds and four drivers, so they, they bid a route. We, we, uh, generally ask for two seasons, but Larry only wanted to bid one season because we never know what. Equipment costs and fuel costs are.
That's the first time that I remember seeing, uh, this, um, I mean, is this, am I mistaken or is this?
No, this is every year, we do snowplow bids.
Okay, alright.
You've done snowplow bids, right? Yeah. Every year we do this and, uh. They provide their own truck, their own fuel, that's where that, every day, five dollars an hour. So, uh, Troy has, uh, suggested that, uh, or. Is. They suggested that we accept this.
Can I see that information?
Sure.
Thank you. Is this, is there any, um, is there any, um, liability for the town in terms of the operation of snowplow on, on Town Road to the contractor?
That's a damn good question.
I don't need to cut through and monkey wrench the thing, I just wanna know.
It's, it's, I'm sure, whatever it is, it's been covered every year or so.
Okay.
And Larry's been the same guy that we had for years, whatever. Alright? My damn good question, I mean, I don't have an answer.
I will look it up.
I didn't know, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's. But Troy approved it, so Troy does know.
Troy does know, right?
And, uh.
Okay, alright, so, any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye? Okay. Tree removal. What did I do with my tree removal information?
I have three trees removed today, so they're all up there with chainsaws and everything.
I asked one that did the work or was it another contractor, was it Askland?
No, Dad and Son.
Oh, Dad and Sons?
Yeah.
It was you, you paying for it.
Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, this is, I was talking about poundable.
Well, I should have talked to our tree board.
So.
Prior to land, I know, not much to go on there.
Sorry, I thought I printed that email and I guess I didn't.
Yeah, it was, uh, the, the guy called me and asked me for your, for your contact information, it's a standard form.
Right, it's a standard, there's a standard form, uh, Eversource is doing considerable tree work in town. Uh. They have some contract with. The big orange trucks, Askland.
Yeah, Askland, yeah.
Askland. You don't pronounce the H.
No, they don't pronounce the H, sorry. Seventy-four and thirty-two or.
Yeah, they're, they're doing, uh, and, and, yes, and I believe one ninety. No, I, I looked at. Five or something, I don't know, any of that cuts to our town, they're going everywhere, they're doing a lot of tree work. Uh, they will be contacting landowners prior to taking the trees down. And I would, uh, encourage landowners that have trees that are. In danger of coming down to, uh. And I would uh encourage landowners to have trees that are in danger of coming down to uh. Please allow them to take them down, so.
I saw that, I mean, yeah, you all specified out exactly where the trees were.
Yes, yeah, I, that's the email I had, it's like four pages of where they're taking the trees down.
Person wants to know what theirs are, they can contact you, can't they, Pete?
Yes, also Askland will be contacting them prior to them taking the trees down, probably with a lot of notice. On that same topic, I received a notice from Demus today, Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. Governor Lamont has put out a special warning for this year. They're expecting thirty-seven name storms, I believe, and they're, they've got uh a lot of. Uh meteorological evidence in the South Atlantic. Heating oceans and El Niños or El Niñas or something that is supposed to cause big hurricanes. So we are overdue, they expect a major hurricane every sixteen years and we are now in year thirty-two. Without one, so. Wow, yeah. Uh I posted uh on the town Facebook page a link to the governor's message, which was long. That brings us to old business and uh you've asked us to bring a budget discussion.
Second discussion, so um, yeah, um, I, I. Two people who spoke at, and are in presence to speak indicated that uh we wanted to try and reach out to the town. Um, you know, we tried to do that, what, a month ago, three weeks ago or something like that. I mean, a mailer, it was discussed at a board of selectmen meeting and um we didn't move forward with that. Um because concerns over blackouts, concerns over blackout periods and concerns over budgetary issues. Um that's unfortunate, uh I would have liked to have seen a, a mailer gone to each individual household in our town. For the first budget uh that was sent out, that would have been very, very good, and we would have had more than sixteen point seven percent. Or sixteen point nine percent turnout. Um now we're seeing our second one, um and uh we can, I, I, I haven't heard any conversation at all and we're about. Trying to send something at this point.
There, there has been discussion uh with uh between myself. And uh the chairman of the board of education and the chairman of the. Board of Finance and the chairman of CIP.
Yeah.
And what we're trying to do is we're trying to craft a letter that will meet the legal requirements. And it's turning. Uh out to be a uh. More difficult task than we thought, so we're, we're working on it, we have, we, we've got a draft, but I think there's problems that are. There's parts that are problematic.
Well, it's good news that we're moving forward, um, we're trying to move forward, um, and uh. If nothing else, just simply um, you know, a summary of, well, that piece of paper right there.
Yes, um, well, that was, that was under this discussion, if you don't mind my.
No, go ahead.
I, I would like to, to uh, this is just the straight numbers, that's all it is, this is from the, the uh. Business office and, and I would like to know your feelings on approving, posting this to the town website.
No, I absolutely, alright. So this is um the, the fail budget summary and the new board of finance proposed budget summary. For by sixteen twenty twenty-four, this has the percentages at, um, I think it was six point one percent increase for the failed budget referendum. And a five percent increase for the new budget referendum. Um and that we've also benefiting from uh interest income from higher interest rates. So um I, I'm totally in favor of, of making that available on the town website, I'm also totally in favor of. Putting um it into a letter to send out to the townspeople, every, every household. I know that it costs much, much less money for town, our town to send that than it would for private people to send.
Well, I will, I will. Continue my efforts in that. So and I, 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 I believe I'll talk to Bruce Christina and. Right, for this, alright.
Right, so if we were to six point one percent increase overall. Um and that failed and um that referendum. I think um, you know, in summary, we've made, uh it was a, a six point one percent increase was very large, difficult. You know, uh we're suffering with large inflation, so that cuts both ways, we have. People in town having to pay higher prices, which makes it harder for them to pay increased taxes and also have on our side. Increased expenses because everything's costing more, and then we had our large influx of um. Special education students, which hit our board of education budget, I mean, uh as Stephanie indicated, um, you know, people have worked very, very hard. For a long time trying to get this thing moving forward and it's something that is acceptable, um. And it's not perfect for anyone, there are people in town who want to spend more money and there are people in town who want to spend less money. Um I think what we have now is a good compromise, um and I would urge everyone. Um to review uh what's being, being put on, on the website, contact um your people in town, um your elected representatives. Um Pete's office to ask questions and I urge everyone to support the revised budget. Make sense, Pete?
Mm-hmm, thank you. Anything for me? That brings us to our closing present to speak. Is there anybody that uh? The uh. It remains the same. Your uh participation is encouraged and uh please be appropriate and stay on topic. Let's start with Stephanie, I saw her hand first.
Thanks Pete, Steph Summers for Y Road. Um so I appreciate uh the, the discussion that you, that you had and for Matt's comments about. Context of this uh second round at the referendum, um. I uh wanted to add kind of a postscript idea for the town meeting, I think it's important that. Um maybe you have on board the little Donna's little sheet that sort of shows. Uh the, the mill levy um. Uh calculation, once we've applied the additional fund balance, there's two hundred thousand more than we originally had. So to alleviate the pain for the taxpayer, plus the budget cuts and everything, so. I think that's helpful and also I'm assuming the budget packet itself will be updated and handed out, I think you mentioned something.
It's already available at the town clerk's desk.
Okay, and my other point was the blackout period, uh my understanding from um. The legal sources I've talked with are that the blackout period does not start until as far as. Uh pushing yea or nay for, for the budget. Um private citizens can do whatever, but for elected officials, it starts at the conclusion of the town meeting. Between that and the referendum, so that's after a week from tonight when that town meeting. Gavel goes down to the, you know, to adjourn to referendum, that's when the, the period of uh reserve happens. So I just, I would encourage, that's why I spoke upfront about this communication going out, I think it's real important that it happen. Before the town meeting date, um and I know that's tight, cause you've got to do printing and every door direct is not like. A sci, it's, it's not like a science, it's according to whatever the carrier's load is that day and if they'll be able to get it out the day you want it. So it would really have to be in the post office's hands by the end of this week. And I know because I've done a lot of this kind of stuff and I've been a project manager in the newsroom, so. You have to back up from the actual drop deadline and then add in all the space you need. I'm happy to help you with any kind of editing help if you need it, um I think I've offered that to you day one, Pete. Um and you know, uh I, I just think that. Um it's, it's crucial to get this information out because you have to realize people are not coming to the website to seek information necessarily. And if they do, they may not find what they're looking for, so it's a step in the right direction to post it there. But as far as doing due diligence to get more than sixteen percent to the polls. And even the ones who came the first time are clueless probably about the second date. You know, for second referendum and when that's happening, so it's quite a big hill to climb, uh Matt's right on that point. Um and I, I just would urge you to be, you know, to break a sweat and to do this because. I, otherwise I think people are gonna think there's nothing really going on and they don't really, you don't, no one needs their vote and all that. And I also think it's incumbent upon anyone who's in town office. Or you know, either voluntary or paid or whatever to support the budget to keep the towns. Operating it at a reasonable capacity because um there have been big efforts to cut it before this. And, and definitely on the second round too. Um and thank you very much and also congratulations on the two million from state money.
Thank you.
Road projects.
Jim?
Hi guys, Jim Marshall, forty-six official wrote again, um I won't belabor the point too much, cause Steph touched on it already, but. Um while I appreciate the comments on the mailer going out, uh it, the conversation tonight missed half of the point and value, which was that. As discussed, when this whole idea was conceived, the notion was that this letter comes from the four heads. Expressing their support for the budget, it's more, the importance of it is more than just expressing the bare facts of the budget, which is also important for people to know. But the critical point of this is for the four chairs of the, of the committees that are driving this budget. To express their support and to recommend the approval and that happens before the town meeting. So that you can express that opinion, that's the key for getting this out and if you're not doing that. You're not, in my mind, fulfilling your responsibility to promote the budget you guys pass. Um so I encourage you, I, I know there's movement behind the scenes, but I encourage you to jump on it expeditiously. Um and step up and really promote the fact that this is, this budget is important to the town. Um and that you support it, that's the key, the key motivation here, so please, I, I encourage you to do so, thank you.
Thank you, Jim, anybody else? Seeing no other hands? Do we have anything for Gooden Walker? I don't know of anything right offhand.
I thought we did a good day in the parade, we're both very well attended.
I thought so too, I uh. We uh.
Good turnouts.
We can. Yes, and I made it back up the hill?
That's congratulations.
I wasn't keeping up with you. Hearing uh nothing, nothing else, I, do I hear a movement, uh motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, I second that.
Paul, in favor? Aye.
Pete, could I just add something? It's not about the, the aforementioned points, it's just if your viewing pleasure has not sated your appetite for town government. Um people should head over to the EDC meeting at seven thirty. Because they're gonna get an update on a strategic plan that involves everybody in the town's future. And uh they're also talking about that, um, the, the tax, what is it called, the tax smoothing out of the. Uh electrical projects. Rates, you know, rates of return, so I can't remember what the, the boilerplate name is. But it's a, it's an interesting agenda and I think people should go.
Thank you.